Thanks, Stan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Either button works.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Carson City Airport Authority here on Wednesday, June 16, 2021. On behalf of members of our staff who are here this evening, members of the public who have dialed in, and members of our collective Airport Authority, I apologize for all of us who were tardy. There are some traffic issues due to the fire up in Pleasant Valley, and I think everybody was affected. I know I was, and I actually made it on time, but not everyone did, so please pardon the tardiness. It's not the way I prefer to run things, but it is what it is. With that, we're going to have a call. We've called the meeting to order. We're going to have a roll call and a determination of the quorum. Danielle, would you do that for us, please?
Chairperson Golden.
Here.
Vice Chair Harris.
Here.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Member Hamilton.
Here.
Member Pulitz.
Present.
Member Hutter.
Here.
Acquamous present.
Very well. Tim, can you lead us in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Excellent. We're on a roll here. So we're moving on. I want to thank Tim Pulitz for working with me, putting the agenda and the board memos together, along with Steve Dacus. Thank you, sir, for doing your part. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to approve the minutes of past Airport Authority meeting.
By the way, the minutes are in the back of your packet. I stapled them to the back this month.
Does everyone have a chance, opportunity to review those minutes? You said it's in the back, Tim?
Yes.
One of these board packets had it, one of them didn't, but what we're looking at is the minutes of May 19, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review those? And can we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of May 19, 2021.
Thank you, Stan. And do we have a second?
Second. John Rogers.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 19, 2021 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
One abstention. Bradley Harris.
Thank you, Bradley.
I was absent from the meeting.
Thank you. Oh, that's right, you were. Okay, modification of the agenda. I do reserve the right as chairman to modify the agenda, and we're not going to make any modifications to this evening's agenda, but I do want to note for our discussion and possible actions this evening that one of our agenda items, Agenda Item Number Two, has been pulled at the request of the applicant, so we will not be hearing Agenda Item Number Two. The applicant made the request to pull the Agenda Item subsequent to the Agenda and Board Packet being published. Okay? So, we're going to move on to Item Number One. This is something Tim and I have discussed with Rick Lee. We're hoping that we can have the support and consent of the Airport Authority on this matter. It's a consideration for a pay increase for our airport operations technician. Rick has done just an absolute commendable job in his position since his hire date. He's very much committed to the airport and the Airport Authority. We've budgeted an increase in Rick's pay. It is in the budget, and accordingly, I'd like the Airport Authority to consider a pay increase with a recommendation of 5% effective July 1 to recognize his dedication and productivity to the airport. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim. Tim, maybe you'd like to embellish on Rick's performance and your work interaction with him.
Yes, thanks, Chair Golden. Yeah, Rick Lee has been exceeding my expectations in all areas of his performance. His knowledge, his dedication, his thoughtfulness, his understanding of our relationship with our patrons, his willingness to work as a team player has been exceeding my expectations. So I'm 100% in favor of acknowledging that and providing him with the increase at this time.
Before I open this up for discussion, I do want to point something out. An error on my part. I skipped over public comment. We're going to go back to public comments after we hear this matter. Okay? So if any members of the public are online this evening or in the audience, any comments? We're going to take your comments after we hear this Agenda Item Number One. So I'm going to open this up for discussion amongst the Airport Authority and let our Airport Authority members opine on the matter. Paul?
I'm in favor. He's done a good job. I watch him every day, so I'm with you on this.
Stan, do you have anything you'd like to share with us about Rick?
What is his present pay?
Tim, can you address that, please?
I don't have the information in front of me, Stan. I know it was significantly less than the person he replaced.
Yeah, we can't. I think we have that, though, in our board memo, don't we? Let's turn to our board memo. I thought we had addressed that in the board memo.
The pay increase would result in a $2,392 increase.
Okay, so hold on. $2,392 was the increase?
Yes.
Okay, I'll tell you what his current pay is. Stand by, Stan. Let's just say $45,000 approximate would be his current rate of pay. Okay? So if we looked at that on an hourly basis, let me think about that for a minute, because he's getting paid by the hour?
Right.
Yeah, so let's take. And again, I'm giving you rough numbers, but I'm pretty close.
So that, this increase is going to put him at around 45, 46?
47. Looks like he's getting paid about $21 to $22 now.
Right. I did not work with him. I know a lot of people that did, and we use the term "people that were good employees", team player, and he's a team player.
Absolutely. Bradley?
If I could ask you questions. How long has Rick been with us?
About eight months.
How long?
Approximately eight months.
I can't support that. I think that annual, I think reviews should be done on an annual basis, and they should be done in a systematic way and not just say, "Well, the guy's a good guy, and he's been here eight months, and here's 5%." So I think Rick's fine. I just think that this is a knee-jerk reaction, and we need to have a system in place by where we look at his performance, rather than just, I mean, our previous guy went years and years without an increase at all, and now we're giving a guy an increase after eight months. We just need a system. In other words, we need to be professional about this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Carl.
So I'm not sure that doing this at this time would represent something that's not systemic. July 1 is, I think, the first day of our fiscal year, is it not?
And that is, that is why this came up, because our prior manager had advocated for this effective July 1. And if we're going to respect the work of our prior manager in the direction that you led us in, I'm sorry.
My mic was off. Carl, what I was saying is, our prior manager had asked us to have this, you know, on this date. It was what was, you know, represented to Rick, because July 1 is the start of our fiscal year, and we did hire him at a rate of pay that was lower than what had been proposed. He's doing an exemplary job. He's pulled his weight and then some in the past few months.
Yeah, so I have no disagreement with Member Harris's feeling that things should be systemic and not sort of, hey, you know, because it's a good day to give somebody a raise. That said, I have a suspicion, and, you know, I think you just spoke to it, that, you know, this may have been one of those strategies of, let's start somebody at the lower end of this, let's see how they do, and then at a planned date that may or may not be a year from the start date, but might be a sensible anniversary date going forward to take a look at this. That's kind of what I was guessing might be happening here.
Yeah, I would, I disagree in that I don't see any benchmarking here. I don't know, I can't know what is a high rate, a low rate. We don't have the manager here to say, "Yes, we did start him low." We just don't, this seems very rash to me. And, you know, yeah, it happens to be the fiscal year, and maybe, you know, it's a nice coincidence, but I still, I mean, where did 5% come from? What do, like, positions earn? Again, it just seems like a very unprofessional way to run an organization if you're just going to say, "He's a good guy, here's 5%." And I can't, I haven't seen anything that would suggest that it's anything but that.
John, would you like to opine on this matter?
Hey, what can I add to the discussion? I would like to tell the rest of the authority that I did have a discussion with Ken about this before he left. He was advocating for a 20% increase, which I was not in favor of, and I expressed that to him. I absolutely think Bradley's correct that we shouldn't just have it be a whim of the manager or the board that determines what raises, the raises happen. But I also would like to add to the mix that the start of the fiscal year is a convenient time to think about doing raises, but it's a horrible time from a perspective of the operation of this board, because in an average year, we have that open house at the end of June, and every other year, we have board elections at the end, at this meeting. And so if I was, it was left exclusively up to me, I would have us be doing yearly appraisals of our employees using a standard that we establish, and I'd be honest with you, I'm amazed that there isn't one already in existence after all these years, and I would be doing those appraisals, you know, in this August or September timeframe, and then, and then dealing with any raises at that point in time. I think that would be, make the most sense. So I guess I have a question. Is anybody aware of any kind of formal appraisal, performance appraisal system in place for our employees?
You know, unfortunately, John, in the three years Ken was here, nothing was ever developed, which should have been by management. I just can't say anymore. It was never done. The reality is, Rick has really pulled his weight and shown his, you know, performance to those of us who have boots on the ground at the airport, who see this every day, who work with him on a regular basis. And this was, we're carrying through on what Ken had recommended that we do, effective July 1. And that's all we're trying to do here is, you know, proceed on the representations that were previously made. I'll respectfully remind everyone who was in the Airport Authority meeting last year online that there was an advocate for another person at a much higher rate of pay. You may recall that debacle. I just, I don't see what the problem is here, and I agree with Bradley. It would be nice to have a very systematic means of review and performance. In this case, it's a matter of recognition and a representation that was made to Rick by his past supervisor that we need to carry through on. It's pretty basic.
I, again, I can't support anything if there isn't some sort of market data or some, I mean, we don't, we got a proposal that doesn't even have his rate of pay, you know? So really, it feels pretty cheesy. We, we need market inform, I need market information. It could be that after I see that, I want to go more than 5%. But I don't know why we're in a hurry, and I don't know why, when we're doing something as important as increasing our operating costs, we don't have a more thorough review of what's going on here. Again, I can't support this without data.
Go ahead, Stan, please.
I don't believe in penalizing somebody because we don't have something in the system. That's a fallacy. This board has to assume responsibility for not having paperwork like this in the system already, and I feel we're doing unjust to the employee.
But there's nothing saying that after eight months, it's time for him to get an increase.
Because you can't.
Oh, I understand that, but.
Then that's my argument.
My, my argument is, there's no policy, so we're just making it up, and I don't think that's right either. I don't see that we're penalizing anyone. We're just not ready to do this.
Bradley, we appreciate your input, and you have your opinion, and everybody else is entitled to theirs. And at this point, unless there's any further matters to discuss on this, I'd be happy to entertain any sort of a motion from the Airport Authority on this matter.
I'd be happy to move to increase the pay rate of the airport operations technician, Rick Lee, by 5% effective July 1, 2021.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to increase the pay rate of the airport operations technician, Rick Lee, effective 5% July 1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries six to one. On that note, again, I made an error. My apologies. I had jumped over public comment. We're going to backtrack for a moment to Item E. Is there any public comment on any matter that is agendized or non-agendized? Danielle, do we have any callers who would like to provide public comment?
We have a couple callers on the line at this time.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Because of the fire, I asked our insurance representative, Brandon Lewis, to call in. It's typically reserved for a public comment, but I asked him to call in to support his Agenda Item as well as Armstrong Engineering, if that's okay. They come in?
Oh, absolutely. And if those two callers are our insurance agent and Chris Knox, our engineer, if they could kindly wait until their Agenda Items, that would be great.
They're aware of that, but I want to make sure you understand they're coming in on a phone call.
Right, understood.
Good.
All righty, we'll begin with the first caller. Caller, when you hear the two beeps, it will be your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, board. This is Chris Knox, Armstrong consultant, so we will certainly stand by until our items on, up for, on the agenda.
Thank you, Chris.
Caller, when you hear the two beeps, it will be your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Nadine Crowe. I'm also with Armstrong.
Okay, thanks, Nadine. If you could stand by, we're going to get to you relatively quickly.
And caller, when you hear the two beeps, it'll be your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, Brandon Lewis with USI Insurance, and happy to wait for our Agenda Item as well.
Thank you, Brandon. We greatly appreciate it. You'll be coming up, oh, let's see here, quickly.
And those are all the callers we have at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much. As I mentioned, the applicant for Item Number Two asks that this matter be removed from the agenda, so we won't be discussing that. We're going on to Item Number Three. This is a review of the final design of the East College Parkway landscape plan to authorize and approve a bid of the project. In May of 2020, just about a year ago, we were presented as an Airport Authority with multiple landscape designs that were approved. The final design review included plant selection. A budget item was established for this project, and at this time, after discussion with Stan Jones, my counterpart to my right, the two of us felt it was prudent at this juncture to advertise for construction bids and proceed with the project, provided it fell within our, you know, budget lines. And we've sat on this for a while. One thing led to another, and Stan, I'm going to let you opine on this matter first, if you'd like. If not, I can start with someone else, but you and I are in quite the agreement on this matter, that we should probably proceed with pursuing this, going to the next step.
Well, I just think it would help enhance the quality of our airport facility if we did upgrade it a little bit, and I have not seen this until now. I thought there's no mention of a sign. I think a sign is something that's more, in addition, is more appropriate than maybe some of the landscape, or it should be included, a new sign. Other than that, I have no problem with the design as it was presented or given to us.
Okay, we'll have to include the sign, obviously, in the landscape plan, but the big item, dollar-wise, was the redesign of this area.
Right. Right.
And landscaping.
Right.
And I couldn't agree with you more. We need to remove the old sign, get a modern sign in there, you know, that represents who we are.
And those aren't cheap.
No, they're not.
So, okay, thank you.
Okay. And, and that's why it's on the agenda, just so, there's a little background here. Stan and I had this conversation as friends, and we said, you know, it's really time for the Airport Authority to go to the next step in this process. So Paul, do you have any opinion on this?
Yeah, I guess there's, there's, there's two things. Number one, with our, our, our new possible, our FBO coming on, they, they are thinking of maybe doing something additionally that, that might help us do a better job with our front area here. And I, I, I know we've been waiting on this quite a while, but at the same time, I guess, I'd, I'd almost rather see what maybe our future plans could be to perhaps work with that, that group to possibly, you know, do, do something. So those are, that's one thought. The other, the other thought is that, I've said it here a number of times at, at the Board, that we really need to do a better job at, at putting some money or putting some resources into, in back of the airport, the, where the, the runways, the taxiways, the weeds, this, that, and the other thing. And I just talked with Rick, and we're trying to devise some way, basically, the weeds are, they're out of control. We need to somehow get control of this. And you go to the other airports, it's clean, it's nice, it's, it's well-manicured, and we are not. So I've talked with Rick about a, a plan, and he, he's come up with a plan of how to do that, and I'm not sure what the budget's going to be to do that, whether we bid it out, whether we do it ourselves. Rick seems to, think we can probably do it better ourselves, to buy a, a weed killer machine that'll do a good job. So I guess my, my thoughts are, instead of jumping, I'd, I'd almost rather wait a month to see what we can come up and how much this, the, the, the other part of the airport's going to cost us, as well as, maybe we're going to get some, maybe we'll make some progress with our, our, our Carson Tahoe group to see what we might do here. So, you know, as, as much as I'd like to move forward on things quickly on, on this particular issue, I, I wouldn't mind waiting a month.
Yeah, I think Paul has a really good point. First of all, I would say that when it comes to the, the back of the airport and the front of the airport, I see those as two different things in that the, the front of the airport, at least for, for several years, that's going to be a one-time expense, and the back of the airport's something we got to stay on top of all the time. So that is a maintenance expense versus this capital investment that we're doing. So, and I, and I completely support putting something into budget so that we can keep the back straightened up, especially when it comes to the weeds, because it's, it's an eyesore, and also, as Paul has said again and again, there's some danger there. And we, we need, we need to get that right. As far as this question of, do we do it or don't we do it? My question would be, if we put the, put it out for bid, and then the story changes and it looks like we would get some help, or at least some direction from, you know, somebody in the future, whether it's somebody looking at the place or, or just suddenly showing up, if they give us some input or, or, or want to throw money in it or something like that, the fact that we've bid this out, does that lock our hands in any way? Or would it, could we just look at it, at it as, we're going to get this bid from an information standpoint, and once we get the information, then we'll know how we want to go?
That, that was the whole point of me putting this on the agenda, with no offense to you, Paul. It, it's the next step in this process, and with all due respect, I first got involved with this Carson Tahoe Executive Group nine months ago. We still haven't seen anything from them. We did assign the Sterling Air lease to them without any reservation. It was a smooth transaction. We, we shouldn't hinge what we do upon what one of our tenants is thinking of doing, okay? Because who knows what and when? You know, we don't know what, we don't know what they're going to do, or when, or if. So this is something, and I, I agree with Stan on this wholeheartedly, the front of the airport is, I hate to say it, an eyesore. And it needs significant improvement. It needs to be brought up to snuff. First impressions are lasting, and a lot of people come through that entrance. With that in mind, let me address what Bradley said, which was, this is only a proposal that we're making, Stan and I talked about it, that where we go out to bid to see, do our costs align with our budget. We're not committing to doing it, just go out to bid, see where we're at, and at that point, we are probably a month or two down the road. And, and we're going to know more, at least of cost and reality. I, I don't see any harm in doing that, but maybe I'm misunderstanding something. Stan, go ahead.
Well, I wasn't aware that somebody else was coming in and offering to help defray the cost. And I, I agree with Brad. What you're talking about, we're, we're talking two different things, but the importance of maintaining the facility is, it's a hazard, and I agree with that. And that probably this year should be priority. I, 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 I think we're in for a long haul this summer. So I have no problem delaying. I, I'm just, but if we do this, I would like to include a sign, if we ever go out for...
I, I think that's fair.
Okay. But I have no problem just...
We've kind of ignored the folks on the, the north side of the table here. Carl, let's start with you.
Waiting, waiting, waiting for the opportunity to.
Please.
To add data. So to Stan's comment or question, to be very clear, nobody has pledged to do anything or invest any sums toward this project, but Paul's good question, you know, not, is notwithstanding, and that is, there could be, right? There could be some sort of, of contribution or share of that work when the time comes to do that work between a future tenant, whether it's Carson Tahoe Executive or Stellar or whoever it may be. I did want to just add the, the info that I'm encouraged to kind of get the sense that maybe by the time of our meeting next month, we will see a presentation before this body. I'm in contact with Brad Cost from Carson Tahoe Executive or from Stellar, and we'll be learning more, I think, in the coming days about what that might look like. So stay tuned. I think we will get more data. That said, even if that was some sort of a mutually invested scenario, back to the chairman's point, we're going to need data. Share of what, right? So we're going to need a number, one way or the other. We're going to need to understand, you know, how to budget that. I mean, the work might not even be able to be possible in the budget as we have it. I hope so, because, boy, it needs to get done. But one way or another, we're going to need to have the information so we all understand what the share that we might ask of somebody or participate, solicit their participation in. So I, I think that there's no harm in getting the bid, and that is the natural next step. I'm in agreement with, remember Jones, perhaps, you know, perhaps we should add to the RFP a sign, and make sure that that element is, is priced in there as well. So that would be a, a nice note. So I, I think, you know, the, enough said there. Let's put it this way, one way or another, by the time you get the bid, by the time you do all this, it's, we're going to be a little ways down the road. I would suggest that probably the timeframe that we'll want to desire to do something is going to be sooner than anybody else is in any position to help contribute to this, just for what it's worth. But certainly, getting the proposal or getting the bid is the next step.
All right. Let me interject for just a minute. There's one critical portion I want to bring up, just one, one matter, and that is, I want to direct everyone's attention to the fact that the budgeted amount was $60,000, okay? If, if no one's, you know.
That's right.
If no one got on to that, I don't think we're going to get a $60,000 bid for this. I think, though, we need to go out to bid and determine, okay, what's the cost?
Yeah, and Stan's sign is going to...
Stan, go ahead.
Well, my one and only conversation with Ken, I mentioned it to him at that time, and he said he had got an informal bid, and I thought he told me it was $110,000. I, I, I think for, for the landscape, I think that's what he told me. And I thought he said, I, I don't remember, he said it was far more than what had been budgeted for.
That's correct, Stan.
And that's, that's my only conversation.
Okay, thank you.
But one, one other question. Are we talking about, for this weed control, are we talking about a trailer that you, you spread a liquid, something to kill the grass, or are you talking about more, or what are we talking about?
What, what we're talking about?
I'll be happy to answer that if you'd like, Paul.
Yeah, it's, they're, they are two separate issues, though.
Yeah. Or do you want to take that, Paul, with the, with the equipment and the?
Yeah, I, I, let's just keep this two separate issues right here.
All right, yeah.
Okay? That, that's, that's a whole, whole different thing. We're not here to do that, and, and, and I guess I'm, you know, I could, I could go, I could go either way here. If we bid it, see what we got, we get a number, we're not committing totally, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
I heard, I heard a number here, budgeted at $60,000, and that drew, drew my eye back to our board memo, where I do see a fiscal impact, impact amount of approximately $80,000 to $90,000. And then it says, is it currently budgeted? Yes. So what's the connection? Where's the 80 to 90 come from?
The, the 60 was what was originally budgeted. We assume it's going to be more.
Okay.
So call it a wag.
Got it.
John, you, you've been silent on this. Give us your take as a treasurer.
Happy to do so. Ken did bid that, bid this project out, got, he had people come in and look at it, got informal numbers. The 110 was the total cost for hardscape, which is the reconfiguration of the curbing and redoing of the driveway and putting in a sidewalk. And then the balance of $50,000 was all the plants and the irrigation and so on and so forth. And so he brought that before the board, and the board was eh, was, was not looking too favorable. And so then he split the costs up, and he said, maybe we should just do the hardscape. And that came, that was his, that's where the $60,000 number came from. The $80,000 to $90,000 number came from the fact that our, our budget currently shows a retained earnings of 80, of $85,000 for next year. And so if, that, that number's speculative, that if, if we did get something in that range, that we could afford it. So that's, that, that's, that's the numbers. I'm, I have two thoughts. One is, who's going to do the RFP? You know, I mean, we don't, we, we have a temporary manager, you know? And, and so, and then, and then, if, if, for me personally, if I was going to go out and bid a landscape project to do that on July, you know, in June of any year, you'd be lucky to get me to show up. So what, so my proposal is, my proposal is, let this be a interesting and beneficial project for our new manager, and we start, and we, and we shoot to get the decision made, or possibly the project started by next spring, that we start the bidding process later on this year, we don't, that we don't start it now. That'd be my recommendation.
John, I'm, I'm not retorting what you're saying. I, I do want to point something out, though. At least in my yard, I do a lot of planting, and so do a lot of other people with landscaping in the fall. So it may be to our benefit to do something, even if, I like your idea, let a new manager deal with it, but e- even if we did that, I wouldn't kick the can another year.
I'm not, I don't sure I would either, but I, but I got a feeling we're going to get a lot more ac, um, action, shall we say, on the, on the bid? We're going to get, we're going to get an enthusiastic response to our bid if we were to, if we were to put it out in the world in November or October than if we did it in...
I, I think if we put it out in September, we're fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But all I'm saying is, should we put out a bid to do all or a portion of this and a new airport sign?
Okay.
Tim?
Okay, well, thanks. I'm the last, one of the last comment.
The most important?
The one that's... First of all, quickly, yeah, the, the expenditures that we, we allocate for the, for the front, for the public appeal compared to the, what I consider the back or the, the usable part of the airport, is two separate issues, with the back trumping the front 10 to 1, as far as priority. But I like the idea of getting this bid out based on the way we had it designed and find out truly what costs would be. It doesn't hurt us to get, it doesn't hurt us to get a quote. It's not going to, doesn't do a thing against us to get quotes. I think the quotes are going to come in over 100 grand. I think that'll give us a good benchmark on how we want to proceed. We may want to say, okay, in the meantime, I can go out. And I don't mind going out and helping getting some bids, and I, I also don't mind talking to the sign companies about a possible budget for a professional sign that we can bring in front of the board as well, to kind of play with this. But getting the money thing started is good. Why not start getting some quotes out just to get it started? We have to vote on it before we proceed, so we're, we're not really putting ourselves into a hole. I do also have a lot of concern about the, we did two things about the front of the airport in the last few months. One was talking to the Carson Tahoe Executive Group about possibly having them invest some money on a front, on a, on a, possibly a joint venture even, on the front of the airport. We also had a discussion that Michael helped put together for a federal stimulus grant, where we put in for $6 million that the city's behind us on, that could also help with this front of the airport as well. And that was, that's what it was put for, was the front for the terminal area. So we have quite a few balls up in the air right now. Doesn't hurt to start on this one to get it costed, but I would be very surprised that it ends up being the way it is on paper right now, but we'll know, and we get to vote on it. So I'm, I'm a supporter of starting the, the bid process. And with that said, uh...
But let me clarify a couple of things here, too, on this matter. And, and I'm not putting feathers in anyone's cap or tooting anyone's horn. We're very fortunate that our interim general manager, or interim airport manager, and yours truly, have a lot of experience when it comes to bidding projects and dealing with sign installations all over the country. We happen, and I think both of us happen to know what it's like dealing with sign companies, and we know quite a few. It, it's not that hard to get bids for these things, pick up the phone, maybe do a little advertising, get the bids. There are really three components of this that we're talking about. I want to make that clear. There's a sign at the airport entrance, which I think is paramount. It, it's, it's non-negotiable, we got to replace it. There's the landscaping, and then there's the hardscape. There's, there's these three components. We don't have to do all three. We can prioritize once we see where the numbers come in. But I think, again, punting for a later date, I'm not sure that helps us. Give you a quick anecdote. Probably a month ago, myself, Paul, Tim, and Rick Lee were standing in a meeting outside on the airfield. We're going to be doing some airport improvements that collectively, Tim and I and Paul are kind of handling on our own, with our own funds and resources. We're going to be putting in an airport runway webcam, that you'll be able to see the whole airport environment, including the runway and surrounding area, and we're going to be putting in a midfield windsock. Airport's not funding this, so that's out of the question, didn't need Airport Authority approval. But the reality is, we probably started that process easily six weeks ago. We still don't have a bid on the webcam, although we've had contractors on site, and the airport windsock and assembly just shipped yesterday. And I, I don't remember, Paul, when exactly we met, but I think it was a month ago, four weeks ago.
Yeah.
It was before our meeting in May. And, and it's taken this long, and we still don't have bids for that damn webcam, even though we said, let's go forward with it, let's locate it here, let's call these folks, which Tim and I got involved with, you know, we got our internet service provider involved. We still don't have any numbers. So I see no harm or foul pushing this downfield, getting some metrics in the bid process and seeing what the numbers look like. We're not committing to anything. We're, we're seeing what's the cost, and then we decide if we want to do it. want to do it.
Just make a motion.
Any member of the public want to comment, since there's a member of the public? No, okay. Just checking. Okay, with that, I would entertain...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, Steve Takis, Airport Counsel. I just want to alert you that on projects that have a value of over $50,000, the NRS requires that we advertise for bids. Now, I don't know when you're talking about getting some idea of what it costs, whether you're actually asking for bids that you may accept. If that's the process, then you need to advertise for it. If you're just calling different contractors and asking them to look at you, and look at it and give you a ballpark, and it's not actually a bid, then you don't need to go through that advertising process. But I just want to alert you...
No, that's a good point.
$50,000, $50,000 is the cutoff for that.
That's a good point, so I guess we should go out for bid on this, unless we're gonna look for proposals.
If you want something that you can accept and you can rely on, then you should advertise for bids and get real bids.
I think, I think we should, but it's, that's just me, it's up to, you know, the will of the board.
Well, in that case, would the sign likely be one RFP, and the hardscape/landscape-integrated piece be a second RFP?
What do you think, Stan?
It's a different business.
Three separate? Yep.
Yeah.
We have three separate components there, and I'm not sure we want to do the hardscape either.
Hardscape, landscape, and sign, yeah.
Yeah, we just get a bid for it.
Well, this design seems to have central to it, an island of gardens inside a piece of hardscape, so I'm not sure how you can split the baby on...
This is true, I believe some of that is already there, though. You know, that's a good point, Carl.
But I mean, it seems that probably, even if we were to move forward with some phased approach to what we'll just broadly call landscape, hardscape and plant material, I'm just thinking of it mentally as, what are the likely vendors? You know, it's gonna be somebody takes the contract for landscape construction, and then there's probably, if there's a natural split, it's a sign company, would be the second piece. You might find somebody just to bid the whole thing in some...
We'll find a sign, Tim and I will find a sign company, that's not a problem. And obviously, we'll bring any design back to the Airport Authority for approval before we proceed with any of that.
And I'm willing to just meet with Mr. Takis on the side to get the proper procedural things in place, and I'll be happy to push forward with getting this started, whether it's three, two, or one, whatever, I'll happy to get it right, so we can at least get some numbers started.
Okay. So, do we want to make a motion on this, anyone?
Oh, I'll move, I moved, I'm on the wrong one here. I'm getting ahead of ourselves here, aren't I?
There you go, Tim.
I got it, yeah, I got it here. Okay, proposed motion, I move to accept the proposed final landscape design and allow airport manager to solicit bids from licensed contractors and return to the CCAA for bid acceptance, and I'm adding signed design as well.
Signed, design, and installation.
And installation.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
Who seconded that? Stan, was that you?
It was Carl.
Carl? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept, to accept the proposed final landscape design and allow the airport manager to solicit bids from licensed contractors and return to the CCAA for bid acceptance, or rejection for that matter, and to also bid the design, construction, and installation of a new airport sign at the entrance on College Parkway. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Yes, yes, sir. I was thinking the same thing, Stan, thank you. Tell you what we're gonna do, I do reserve the right as chair to modify the agenda, and Stan brings up a good point, and as usual, he and I are aligned in our thought process. We have a couple of lengthy discussions ahead of us, so we're gonna skip item number four for right now and go directly to item number five. This is the discussion and possible action to review, discuss, and approve the renewal of our aviation liability insurance, public official DNO coverage insurance. Tim's gonna review the quotes for annual renewal of aviation liability insurance and our public officers and directors' insurance coverage, because that's coming up for renewal, and I know we have our agent on the phone, so, Tim, take it away.
Well, basically, we've received a proposal from Brandon Lewis, and what I would just ask him to do is to get on the phone with us and just kind of discuss it, and explain to us what, where, and why, explain the cost, the coverages, much better than I could. So, if he can let Mr. Lewis on the line, I appreciate it.
Brandon here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, Brandon Lewis with USI Insurance for the record, and thanks to Mr. Pulis for the introduction, and also allowing me to join by phone with all the fire issues going on. What we have here, included in your board packet, I'm looking at page 51 of the board packet as a PDF, starts our proposal for the renewals. And the first grouping is public officials and employment practices liability. And if you go to page three in that proposal document, a couple pages down there, you'll see a premium summary. Just a minor increase on that one from last year, this was a new coverage purchased by the board last year, partly at our recommendation. The public officials liability is similar to directors and officers' liability for a commercial entity, it's an errors and emissions coverage, if the board or Airport Authority are sued over a decision that might result in, let's say, financial damage, it's not a bodily injury type coverage, like you're, we have under the aviation coverage, it's more of decision insurance, if you will. This also includes some employment practices liability and third-party employment practices liability, those can help protect the authority against claims for anything from harassment, discrimination, wrongful termination, even failure to hire, if you were sued over that. Those types of claims we could turn into this carrier under this policy. Last year, because it was new, we asked them to waive their policy fee, it's through a program administrator, public government underwriters, and they said, we're happy to waive it, but they said we will add it in next year, so that's the only reason you have a minor increase on that one, to $2,281. The aviation ground operations liability, bit broader in terms of detail, just on the premium side, you'll note an increase there, we did see about, I think, a 20% increase last year. The aviation insurance market was extremely challenging last year, and it continues to be for large airports and large aviation risks, but our underwriter really worked with us, and even though it's up, it's honestly within what we're seeing in the broader market. We're seeing 25 to 50% increases in property premiums, we're seeing 5 to 15% increases in liability premiums, especially for government entities, so we did feel that this was a good renewal from that respect. We did fully market the aviation last year, and there weren't any other markets that could compete, but we certainly keep that in mind, we usually recommend going to market every two to three years, just depending on the situation, to make sure you have the best option. From there, through our proposal, if you go to page six, there's a little more detail on the public officials and employment practices coverage. You can see the limits in general are $1 million, with $5,000 retention, so essentially, those are deductibles. And the policy aggregate is $1 million. You can buy these coverages separately, even on the same policy, where you have separate aggregates, but it, you know, does cost more, so this provides a cost-effective way to get both. Coverage is written on a claims-made basis, and that just means that when a claim is made, when a suit is brought, the current policy that's in effect responds. It could be for something that happened six months ago, but if the claim is made in August after we renew, that current policy would respond. And the important thing about that is to always make sure we maintain continuity of coverage. If the policy's ever not renewed, or canceled, or lapsed, you lose what we call retroactive coverage for things in the past that you may not have seen a claim yet. And on page seven, just some additional information for the public officials coverage. I would just note the consent-to-settle hammer clause, I think we touched on this last year, I just always want to make sure our clients are aware. The carrier does seek your consent to settle matters, if we turn in a claim, but if, let's say, the board decided, no, we don't want to settle this matter, the insurance company would then only be responsible for the amount they wanted to settle for, plus 60%, the airport would become responsible for 40% above that. But that's only if we couldn't come to an agreement, and they could settle a claim, and the board said, no, we don't want to settle it. It just puts a little more risk on the entity if they choose to fight something. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, before I go into the aviation a bit more.
Please continue.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Page nine gives some more information on the aviation ground operations liability. This is very similar, no changes in terms from last year, we have 10 million limits of liability, and this acts as both a sort of a general liability and, as it says, aviation ground operations liability. So it covers a range of risks, from just slip-and-fall claims, bodily injury and property damage to others on your premises, or even if, you know, let's say, a board member and employee is at a conference somewhere, and they accidentally cause injury or damage as part of their work, you know, we have this coverage to respond for you. No major changes on the terms here again, and this is with a group of carriers called Global Aerospace, you'll see at the bottom of the list, there's actually four carriers backing this policy, take a percentage of the coverage. And I think that's part of why, I know last year, there wasn't one single carrier that could compete, this has been a very competitive group for this type of risk. That's just a quick summary of the coverage, I would be more than happy to answer any questions, and certainly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Mr. Chairman?
Brandon, do you have a recommendation here that you want to make to us, or this is it? Just to go with...
Yes, honestly, I would recommend the coverage as proposed, you know, in working with Mr. Pulis on the applications, we did a number of, you know, changes last year, we added the public officials coverage, for example, and we'll certainly continue that every year, we want to take a hard look at it, not just renew it.
Sure.
But that is our current recommendation, is to renew the current coverage.
So, it looks like what we're talking about is an increase of about $1,100 or so from last year, is that correct, Brandon?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and that would give us additional coverage for public officials' management liability of about a half million dollars.
The additional premium of about $1,100 is to renew the current coverage, which already includes the public officials, because we bought that last year.
Right, right.
So honestly, it's just a function of general rate increases in the insurance market, unfortunately.
Steve?
Brandon, Steve Takis, Airport Counsel, do I understand that the retention column is essentially our deductible, so if there were a claim, that would be the first amount that we would pay?
Hi, Steve, yes, that's correct. It's, yeah, that's correct, it functions just like a deductible in that sense.
Great, thank you.
The, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Gonna start now with Carl, I keep going right, I'm going left now. Carl, any opinion?
I'll just make a motion if it were that time, but, go ahead.
You're welcome to do that.
Okay, well, I move to accept the renewal proposal as submitted by Brandon and described to us just now.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to accept the insurance proposal as proposed in our board packet by Brandon Lewis today. Any other comments by members of the Airport Authority? Yes, Stan?
I just want to make sure, are you comfortable with this, Steve?
Yes, I'm comfortable with this, and, you know, we went and got the errors and emissions, the public officers' insurance last year, as Brandon described, and part of that came out of our discussions with the city on the co-op agreement, because the original co-op agreement said the city would provide that coverage to us, but it didn't look like the city was doing that, and so it made sense to us that we really should have our own policy anyway. So that's when we put it in before, and so, I, yes, I'm very happy with what he's proposed, I think he's done a great job, and I would recommend that you go forward with it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the renewal proposal submitted by Brandon Lewis, USI Insurance Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Brandon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Golden, and thank you to the board and staff, I appreciate your business.
Okay, we're gonna do the same thing here, skip out of order to address Chris Knox, we're gonna do his engineer's report, and then we'll continue with our regular business action items on the agenda this evening. So Chris, I know you were standing by, why don't you take a few minutes of our time, tell us what's new?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, actually, Nadine's gonna give our update tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Their information is just in front of the minutes, in the back of the packet.
Nadine, are you, are you online?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I think my phone's cutting out, I couldn't hear any, anything there for a minute. If you can hear me, I'll continue.
Go ahead.
All righty, so I'll just go through the project updates here, the last project, most of you know, being worked on there at the airport, was the pavement maintenance on the runway. The temporary marking and the seal coat was finished on June 6th, and we do have the tentative marking planned, the permanent marking planned for the week of July 5th, however, that's most likely going to be dependent on when we get those signs in, so we can coincide those two together, the permanent marking and the sign installation. As far as the dates on that, the sign availability, we don't have those pinned down yet, but we're working on that with the contractor. Moving on down the list, snow removal equipment building, just as a reminder, we did not receive any bids for that in the previous go-around, so that will rebid in the next fiscal year. And then, as far as the project status for the AWAS relocation project, the snow removal equipment, and the aeronautical survey study, all three of those projects, as far as, I know, we are waiting the grant offer to come through on those, unless you guys have an update on that, I hadn't seen anything come through yet. So if there's any comments, questions about that, let me know. Otherwise, that pretty much wraps it up.
Okay, I do want to make a comment to Nadine and Chris, can you both hear me?
Yep.
Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Chris, I'll contact you tomorrow offline, outside this meeting, but I do want to tell you, I think that the seal coat came out just impeccably great. I trust Paul, you would agree with that, and Tim, you'd agree with that, and Carl, yep, Carl's giving you a thumbs up, we feel that the asphalt maintenance really came out well, thank you.
Well, we appreciate to hear that, the crew actually had some medical issues on their part, so we apologize for things taking a little longer, but I think with what they were faced with, from what we see, they did a great job, and we'll certainly pass that along to them.
It happens, life happens, you know, what are you gonna do? Right? So, we...
For sure.
We appreciate it. Do you have anything else that you wanted to bring to our attention this evening outside of your report?
I don't have anything.
No, I think that pretty much covers it.
Okay, John, you have a question?
This is John Rogers, Chris and Nadine...
This is John Rogers. Chris and Nadine, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate this spreadsheet with the summary for all of the projects. I hope that you make that be a regular part of the report.
Yep, we can do that.
Yes.
And do you mind if I have a comment, Chris? Chris, Nadine, I also agree that the, the quality of work was very good on the pavement. I also was aware of the medical issue with their other professional striping personnel that put their, that subsequently put their timeframe over 50% longer than it was proposed. I had, I had just a half a dozen airport patrons come to me and ask, was there any kind of a remedy for pushing us past that contractual type of a timeframe? And I thought I would just pass that on to you to find out, is there, should there, would there be any kind of remedy for causing some of the downtime that was, was definitely caused by the lack of proper personnel on the job, which was not their fault, but it did happen?
Sure. It did, yeah. And that was, that's a conversation we definitely wanted to have with you. They are basically at their contract performance period right now, so we are nine, nine contract days into this project, counting the work they did last fall. So they technically haven't gone over time yet, but we know there's remaining work yet to do. So we haven't gone into the red yet, but there's really no way of finishing the project without going into the red on days based on that. So there are, there are remedies available. We were going to have an offline conversation with you probably next, next week on that. In fact, I was going to contact you tomorrow and try to set up a meeting probably for Tuesday afternoon to kind of go through that with you and kind of talk about our options and see how we wanted to handle that.
That sounds reasonable. Like I said, it's just, we have to address the comments of our patrons, and that was something that they wanted me to address, and I'm happy to do so, so.
Yep, yes, so there are liquidated damages included for going over contract time on the project. There weren't interim milestones necessarily identified, but overall contract completion date was included in there. So there are, there are liquidated damages in there that are available to exercise if the airport authority chooses to do so.
Okay, excellent.
Question, oh, go ahead, Carl.
Time Approach Project. I'm looking at the good spreadsheet, and I will concur with the treasurer that this is, this is great to see. Just the question was, I know that there was a timing matter around the survey having leaves on trees. What is the current status of when that might take place, or is that pending FAA action?
Yes, sir, that's, waiting on the grant, we probably will have leaves on conditions until, you know, October timeframe. So I, at this point, we're expecting this grant any week now, so we're not too concerned getting the, the survey in this, this season, so to speak. So at this point, no, no, no concern. The survey outfit is standing by, and at this point, we still feel pretty comfortable that we can accomplish that with leave on, leaf on condition, you know, sometime between now and October.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Okay, fair enough. Chris and Nadine, again, thank you for your time. We're going to continue with our meeting. You're welcome to stay on or be on your way to happier places. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, sorry to skip around like this, folks, but it happens. So, item number four on our agenda for discussion, possible action, review job applicants and recommendations of the hiring committee, authorize and approve the next steps in the hiring process, including determining the finalists, setting dates to meet candidates at the airport. The hiring committee is to share data collected, including resumes, valuation tools, and their initial findings of their work with job applicants, and to outline the next step, next steps in our recruitment efforts. So the hiring committee consisted of members of the airport authority, Bradley Harris, Tim Pulitz, and Paul Hamilton. Again, many thanks to all three of you for the efforts you put forth. We also had ownership, owner representatives, John Mays and David Correio. John Mays is here this evening. Thank you, sir. And I don't see David Correio, but I'm sure you have his proxy. So, taken away, I'm going to let you folks tell us what's going on. Enlighten us, please.
If I could just, I would like to read a little bit in the record, just so that, so that we know where we stand in terms of process, because I think that's important considering the open meeting laws. So I'll read that in. Let me tell you what, what my agenda is, and, and then we'll go from there. I'll explain the outcome of the interviews and ask Paul and Tim to confirm that what I, what I share with you is the consensus of the interview panel. We'll then ask if any member of the board has any other candidates they feel should be interviewed instead, based on the resumes they received. We'll then see if we have a consensus on the board. If so, we would ask for a motion to approve the interviewee list. And then we'll talk about whether to hold a special meeting for the interviews and what the, the date of that meeting would be. We'd also, we'll also discuss this meet the finalists night and whether that, that will work for us, as, as I recommended in the April Board of Trustees meeting. If we have that meeting, it will, it should be the evening before the special Board of Trustees meeting. And then we've got to decide on some of the details of, of that meeting, meet the finalists night, if, if we have it. So, to just, so just some background, we received 10 applications from the various channels we use to advertise the job opening. I called each candidate to review their qualifications. Based on their resumes and the conversations I had with them, I determined which of the candidates met the hiring criteria set in the job description. So it was just basically, are they qualified or not? That was the only question there. Of the 10 applicants, four met the applications, the qualifications outlined in the job description. So of the four, one candidate, Matt Nelson, dropped out of consideration because he received a job offer from another airport. So that left us with three. The remaining three candidates were interviewed on June the 2nd and 3rd. As, as you mentioned earlier, Tim and Paul, John Mays, Dave Correio, and I did the interviews. The candidates were Philip Tressel, Corey Jenkins, and Stefan Varholic. Those were the three, and they were interviewed in that order over two days. Four of the interviewees used a rating tool, used the same rating tool. One, Mr. Mays, used his own rating system. Based on the ratings, the panel reached a consensus of who should be interviewed by the Board of Trustees and who should be the alternate. So this is what I believe the consensus is, and then I'd like to hear from anybody that agrees or disagrees. But the consensus was that we would recommend that Mr. Tressel and Mr. Jenkins be interviewed, and that Mr. Varholic be, be anointed as the alternate, and he would be interviewed if either Mr. Tressel or Mr. Jenkins drops out of consideration. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Paul, Tim, and if Mr. Mays would like to comment, if they feel that's a accurate representation of the consensus of the panel.
Again, let me be clear, John, you are more than welcome to comment when I call upon you. You know, if you have anything you want to add to this, I will certainly give you that opportunity. Tim, you want to start? You have anything to add to the discussion?
Well, we, subsequent to that meeting and the initial plan that Bradley eloquently planned out for us about having the two finalists come back and have a, have a meet and greet at the airport, and then the, and then for us to subsequently immediately go in and have a, a special meeting vote to vote for the finalist. Mr. Hamilton and I, and, and also John Mays, thought that we should possibly just consider streamlining this because we feel that we are in consensus on who our number one candidate is, and we'd like to cut to the chase and try to go directly to be, have the approval of the board to let this committee offer employment to, to one particular candidate. Now, I'm not a open meeting law or a city government specialist, so I don't know the protocol, but that's our intent. That's what we'd like to do if we are permitted to. So, that being said, we need to have a discussion about that.
Okay, very well. Paul?
Before we go to Paul, could I just hear from Tim? Was that, was what I described the consensus that came out of the interview?
No, it was subsequent of that. It was the next day or two.
No, but I put the ratings together, I sent it out. It shows that, that the same two people were the top two choices of everyone. That's all I'm asking.
We're, we all saw the, we, we all saw the statistics. You didn't have John Mays in there. When you throw his in there, that the one was, had the higher favor over the other.
All I'm asking is, are the top two that I listed the ones that we agreed would be interviewed if two were interviewed? That, I was just looking for the consensus.
Yeah, absolutely, and they are both quite impressive gentlemen. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, Paul. Please, it's your turn to apply.
That's okay. Yeah, I think we had two really good candidates. Very impressive. And the, through the job interviews, what, what I did in this job interview is I asked scenario-based questions as to how, how, how the applicant would, would, would handle the situation. And basically, there were scenarios that happened at our airport that we, that we would want to know how they would have done that, not knowing, how they, not knowing anything about the situation. And in my opinion, Corey Jenkins did an excellent job of going through those scenarios and, and giving exactly what I felt would be the best thing for this airport, for our patrons, for the board, for everybody. So, you know, with that, I would just assume, if we can, I would just assume, and I think the consensus is with, with most of the people who operated the airport, that Corey Jenkins would be an excellent candidate to nominate, and if we can do it tonight, I think we should.
Okay, thank you, Paul. That's, now, now this begs to ask the legal question of our counsel. And before I go there, let me again give the other member, the ownership representative member of this subcommittee, the opportunity. Do you care to comment, John, on this at all? And if so, please approach the airport authority. And please state your name.
Push the button.
So it goes green. There you go.
My name is John Mays, and I'm a patriot of the airport, and I was also on the hiring committee. And just wanted to say that all the questions were asked of Corey, every single one, he gave the, the best answers, especially Paul's scenario questions. He gave excellent answers on all the questions, and he gave the answers that were favorable to take care of the people at the airport, the people that pay the bills, the people that use the airport. And so he's my first choice by far.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Takeus, can you weigh in on this matter? Does the airport authority have the legal right to move forward at this juncture to make an offer of employment to a candidate subject to terms of employment being negotiated and accepted?
Steve Takeus Airport Counsel, Member Harris correctly described the process that was proposed earlier, and that process included a number of steps. There is no prohibition for you to skip steps. You, what you're noticed to do tonight is take whatever you feel is the next step. And so if you want to skip the interviews because one candidate overshined the others, you're welcome to do that. I would note two things. One is, only this board can, can make that hiring decision. And even though we appreciate Mr. Mays and Mr. Correio's input, they don't actually get to vote on the board. It's the seven of you that vote. And so what a more, majority of you decide is correct. The other consideration is, it should be based on what information you were provided with, not necessarily what somebody else thinks or recommends. And you all had an opportunity to look at the resumes and look at the other information, the grading scale, and the information that Member Harris and others have provided to you. With that in mind, yes, you could go forward and offer it. The one additional consideration is, you already had one good candidate, or what appeared to be a very good candidate, drop out because he got another job. I would just be a little concerned that we don't lose another good candidate because we're going to postpone this through another later process. Even, even if we could make that process relatively quick, it's still going to be longer than this. And so with that in mind, yes, you legally can go forward with what you're noticed to take the next step, being an offer step as opposed to an interview step, but that's a decision for the seven of you to make. If that's what you'd like to do, go ahead and do it. If you would prefer to do the interview stage where the, you know, you have two candidates, or whatever you want to have, come in front of you and interview, you're welcome to do that as well. It's your call.
Okay, thank you very much, Steve. Yes, Stan?
My question, Steve, is can you select a person and then negotiate the contract after he's selected?
Yes, you can, you could, you could select, you could say, for example, you want to go with Corey, I can't remember what his last name is, Jenkins. You can vote to go with him today, authorize a team to go, present him with the terms of contract and negotiate that, but it should be brought back to this authority for approval.
Right.
My understanding is that any of these candidates you talk to have to give a certain amount of notice to their current employers anyway, so we should have time to go through that process.
Yes, Paul?
Yeah, let me just give a little bit of logic as to why I would like to get this thing moving through here as fast as possible, is that, I shouldn't speak for Tim, but I will. He has got another commitment that he has got to meet, and he's not going to have as much time as, as time goes on here to be able to train. Now, Tim has gone into every depth of this whole, of this job. He knows it, and he is critical to getting our new manager trained. So if he had more time to spend here and not other commitments, then I really wouldn't be in that much of a hurry. But if, if you want to know why, that is, that's really front and center as far as my perspective of why we need to get this thing rolling.
Okay.
Could I, could I give my perspective on that?
Absolutely, but before you do, I got to give the folks at the north end of the table, if they have anything they'd like to add to the discussion, let's, let's hear from them also. Carl and John, is there anything you guys would like to add to this?
So, it's always, it's always nice to have the opportunity to talk to finalists and, and have that step, you know, and as we presented the idea, and I thought was a, was a cool one about having the meet and greet. But, you know, the meet and greet, I think, or even, to be honest, a shootout round of interviews, don't make a ton of sense if there really is, in the opinion of those who I at least for one trust to make an evaluation of these candidates, and it sounds like a good process was run. You know, it sort of, to me, strikes, strikes me as maybe an unnecessary step that adds delay and risk in getting potentially onboard a candidate that seems to be desirable, and you know, desirable people don't wait around forever. So I certainly would be open to an expedited process.
Thank you, Carl. John? John?
As Steve pointed out, we all need to make a decision based on the data that was presented to us. So the data that I saw had Corey Jenkins listed as the preferred candidate on three out of the five people who did the interview, and the other two people had the other gentleman, help me out with his name.
The David Cor... Oh, Tressel?
Yeah, yes, they had.
Mr. Tressel.
Yeah, Mr. Tressel, yeah, Tressel, he was listed as their number one candidate. So we actually so what's happening at this meeting tonight is the three people who had a preference are expressing it, and the two people who had an had a different preference are not are not as being as strong in expressing their preferences. And so that's an argument for continuing the process as originally designed. There is also an immensely strong argument in my standpoint in that is that Tim should have a weighted say in what happens. He is the man who is doing the work and is going to continue to do the work to onboard our new manager. And so if he has special concerns or any or any concerns that would encourage us to expedite the process, we should take that. You know, that's 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 my opinion. And and I'm also going to say that if we do take that approach, an expedited approach to make it a more smooth transition from the current temporary management manager to the to the permanent manager, I'm wondering if that person needs to give their employer an extended, you know, notice that they're going to be leaving. I wonder if we could we could pay to bring him up, you know, for.
Well, I I I'm going to address all that that last topic when I have a chance to opine on this matter. I think I'll be able to answer that question, but I know Bradley really wants to opine.
I'd like to hear.
Oh, no, 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 please. It's it's the microphone's all yours, Bradley. Go ahead.
I'd like to hear your opinion before I... No, okay, no, please.
All right, here's my here's my read on this. First of all, we agreed on a process two meetings ago. It was a good process then. I think it's a good process now. I'm disappointed that we've moved off of that. I Tim said, in his own words, we have two really good candidates. So why aren't we? Why don't we want to talk to those two really good candidates? Secondly, we told the candidates, this is the process. This is what we're going to do. I told them on the phone when I talked to them. I told them at the interviews, this is how we're going to do this, and now we're changing things up. Again, I don't I don't think that's right. And finally, I think it's wrong that the person gets a job offer before they've had the opportunity to come in and meet who they would be reporting to. It's not a one-way thing. It's not just that we're interviewing them, they are interviewing us. They get to see us and how we react and and get to ask the question of themselves, what I want to work for these seven people. And that's an important part of the process. It's it goes both ways. So the idea that this manager would 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 come to work when he hadn't met the boss is kind of crazy. So I, you know, I think it was a good process. I was I'm very surprised, and this is the first I've heard of it, that we want to we want to shortcut this. I I think we could have a meeting in two weeks. I know that's two weeks we don't want to take, but I would really, really like us to see like to see us take a the right approach here. And the right approach is when you have two good candidates interviewing both, and they get to meet who they would be working for. I'll have.
Good points, Bradley. Good points. And I think we're going to have that opportunity. And here's why. Let me let me opine now. I'm I'm most distant from this entire conversation. I put my faith in you all who did this work. I want to turn back the calendar a year in my own company. We had this shutdown from the pandemic. Jill Wells, who had worked for us for 40 years, some of you may have known Jill, wonderful woman, we thought we could never replace her. The pandemic happened, Jill is not a spring chicken. Her husband had already retired. Carl, you may remember Jill. Pandemic happened, and she said, I'm scared, I'm opting for an early retirement. We said, okay. We didn't we didn't furlough or lay off a single person in our entire company. And I'm extremely proud of that through that entire pandemic. But Jill left us during that timeframe. And in about this timeframe, we realized that we were going to have to replace her. We we let it go because we didn't know where business was going. And we had a number of applicants and a number of interviews. And the reason I bring this story up is because it's so similar to the discussion we're having today on many points, but one in particular. Some of you, I know Paul and Tim and Carl and maybe Steve and John, have met Courtney, who works for us now. Jill was a AAA employee, five stars. Courtney's AAA plus, five diamonds. Courtney rose to the top of all the candidates. It was evident to us when we interviewed her that this was the candidate. There was no reason to go any further. There was no reason to prolong the process, bring people back for a second interview. There was no reason for us to have her go through an extended stay with us to meet and greet and get an idea who they're going to be working for. We said, this person is who we want. We stood by that decision. I will personally say, I did not make that decision myself. It was, you know, I was there in the process, but it was obvious. She rose to the top. There was no question about it. The similarity here is striking. I've heard from gentlemen who are friends of mine, who are associates and counterparts of mine, who I put my faith in to do these matters. And I have the utmost confidence in Tim and Paul and John and Bradley and David. But the overall sentiment is that one candidate has risen well above the others. And to me, I say we should probably get the process going here. Now, let me give you full disclosure, and this is addresses one of John's questions. And this was what really got me on board with this discussion item. And I said, let's put it out there for discussion. Willing to do it. I took the liberty to reach out to Mr. Jenkins, have a brief phone conversation with him. Nothing about terms of employment, just introduce myself, tell him that, you know, I'm here if he has any questions, anything he wants to know about the airport. Love to hear from him at some point. Like to meet his acquaintance one day. If there's any way we can help, let us know. And I had asked him two questions about this. And one of the questions was, and John Rogers, I want you to pay particular attention to this question that I asked him. I said to him, Mr. Jenkins, I'm just curious, if if we were to offer you this job, would you accept it? The answer was yes. Next question was, well, Mr. Jenkins, if we were to offer you this job, when could you possibly start? I'm kind of wondering. I'd like to know. And the response was, well, I'm I can give two weeks' notice. However, I have a responsibility to my employer that in obligation that I feel is incumbent upon me to give 30 days' notice so I don't leave my employer in the lurches. When I heard that, I understood immediately what my counterparts, who I entrust immensely, told me. This is a gentleman who has a commitment to what he does and who he works with, and it's the exact kind of personality we want at this airport, managing it, working with our owners group, working with our hangar owners, working with our users, and working to better this airport. I don't feel there is any harm. And when this was brought to my attention last week, I was asked, can we put this this way on the agenda? I said, sure, we'll see where the discussion goes. I don't feel there's any harm in offering the job to him pending economic terms and a employment agreement and having him come up here to meet everyone. I feel there's no harm in that. The worst thing that happens is he says no. That's my opinion. We're not saying come to work, sign this agreement right now. That's not what or because I'm not there, but we have to offer it to someone. And I I don't think that we're going to have any benefit with any further interview process based on what I've heard from the folks who were on the interview committee and based on the very brief conversation I had with Mr. Jenkins. So that that's my opinion. Go ahead, Bradley.
I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, you had that conversation with Corey. You didn't have a similar conversation with Philip. And you had the conversation with with Corey because of recommendations from Tim and John and and Paul, which means it's not, you know, it's the idea is you are supposed to, each individual's person is supposed to decide who the best guy for the job is, and instead you, you know, had it whispered in your ear, this is where I want to do, which is obvious that's what happened because you didn't even call the other guy. Okay? You didn't call the other guy, which which tells me you're not making a decision, you're just going with what's out there. Now, you know, it's it's what Tim wants, it's what Paul wants, it's what John wants. That's great, but John Rogers made the point that there were five people on that and on that interview panel, and three of them, three of five said, let's let's do this one, let's do Corey, and two of five said, let's do Philip. And it was it was a very strong, it wasn't, you know, it was closely tied, it was a very strong thing. And that is not a consensus. I mean, it's a consensus that those were the two strongest, and that's what I I brought forward. But but this is hijacking. Okay? Now, it's okay, as as Steve has said, you can you can hijack this process, but the process was put in place. It was everybody agreed on it. It was explained as to what it was going to be, and we do not have in a unanimous decision on the part of the panel as to who this who the person should be. The right thing to do is to interview both of them. Now, I will say, we, you know, we've kind of let the unfortunately, with this conversation, we've now let the cat out of the bag, and, you know, I don't even know if Philip would bother to come. But I would really like us to talk to two well-qualified candidates. That's what we should be doing. We should be following the process we put in place. A telephone call, the fact that you were impressed with one guy when you didn't talk to the other doesn't that's no that doesn't give me any anything but heartburn. And this is this interview panel did not say this is the guy. It was not unanimous. So please, let's not let's not talk about a consensus when it comes to the best candidate. We didn't have a consensus. What we had is a majority, a 60% majority. That's all we have.
Um, Bradley? Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Bradley, and your points are well taken. I do want to inform you, though, that upon speaking with David Creo, he actually joined our majority after speaking with us. He said that if the three of us felt that the that Corey was the right one, that he would also join us in that and subsequent conversations, just for the record. And if you want to talk to David, you're more than welcome to.
That's fine, but just for the record, his rating was for Philip.
I understand, but upon discussion afterward, he and and listening more to our conversations, he said he's more than happy to support Corey as his number one. So if you'd like to speak with him, go right ahead. So that I'm going to leave it at that.
You know what? I'm let me let me just let me just say, at this point, I think it would be kind of a sad thing to do to ask Philip to come. Just go ahead and vote in your Corey. I think I think it's clear where this is going, and I would hate to ask Philip to come when it's already decided.
Thank you, Bradley, and I'll continue with my conversation.
I was just going to advise you, it doesn't matter what the vote was among the committee. What matters is what vote occurs here at this committee. And so don't get too caught up on who had more votes in your interview. It's really the data that was being collected to be provided to this body. And so and and I also don't think using the term hijack is really a fair term, Member Harris. There was a process, and it the agenda item here is the next step, and the next step could easily skip steps in that process. Nobody's proposing a completely different process here. They're proposing a skip step, and so.
Thank you, and and I still have the floor. So that with that, thank you, Mr. Takeus, for clarifying that. I was certainly in favor of going forward with our original plan to interview the two, knowing that we still had a preference going forward. But as when when Paul Hamilton mentioned the the risk of stringing this out and the timeframe associated with my commitment going down the road and the training process, he brought up a good point. And when Michael Golden discussed that short call with the with our number one candidate, and he confirmed he'd want to give at least a month because of respect to his employer, now we're looking at so far down the road that it's going to get past my my prime training period. So all those are just factors. They're just factors in in discussion that have to do with the process. Nothing that Bradley said is wrong, nothing that Paul said I think is wrong either. I do I do believe that I could work with either of the candidates, and if for some reason that our number one candidate chose not to accept our offer, I would still be very more than more than happy to entertain our number two candidate, because I do like him, and he's got a lot of respect for me. But I don't know how the committee feels, how they trust my judgment, working in that office every day. But I do know that one thing that I was extremely impressed about with Mr. Jenkins was his IT skills and understanding how much of what I do on a daily basis has to do with computer-driven applications and communications and preparations. And he's just far and above superior to other candidates in that area, which will simplify his day-to-day tasking activities. The fact that he was working in operations for the last five, five years under four different airport managers speaks a lot. He's seen the the politics associated with working for a city agency that has all the board and all the different types of challenges associated with public entities. He's learned how to work with them well. He has respect of the we've got we've got an extremely good letter of reference from his previous airport manager that retired within a year of now. Anyway, I'm going to go along with what the board recommends. I'm very much a believer in consensus, but if we can expedite this by having the board vote to let us prepare an offer that could be submitted to Mr. Jenkins, upon that, we come to the board. I would like to have him up here in person for the special meeting or before the special meeting to have the board condone our our offer officially.
It has to go that way.
I would think that would be very appropriate, and if that's the case, that's the way I'd like to see it go. But I'll go along with the majority.
Okay, Carl, go ahead.
So I think, just to reiterate, one of the most valuable and important pieces of the proposed process element of having the meet and greet was to put particular attention on the importance of the successful candidate's ability to demonstrate their deep appreciation for the customer, the tenant, the user of the airport, and, you know, a way to bring some other eyeballs and voices into the evaluation of that, right? So for me, that element... So for me, that element, and whether it's necessary or not, in my judgment, and what I'm going to be making my decision on, hinges upon, well, was that murky? Or from the work that our subcommittee did in gathering data, was there a sort of standout sense from, about any of the candidates, about one of the candidates, that said, this person really delivers something convincing in that space versus, you know, we need to have a shootout, or, gosh, we need to get some other opinions out here because I'm not sure if either of these people spoke to, or any of these people spoke to those matters. So that's just kind of where I would come from in this case, in the case of the meet and greet piece. And what I'm hearing is that actually there is a standout with regard to how those aspects were responded to, those scenarios or those questions. Having said all that, I sense there's frustration and some wrong rub about whether another seemingly qualified candidate is being given a fair shake or advocacy. Okay, so let's hear that advocacy. I mean, who is it, who is it that wants to speak compellingly about the merits and how they're so excited about our other candidate? Let's hear it. This is the venue.
As I said, I think we're past that. I don't think it would be fair, I don't think it would be fair...
Hold on, Mr. Harris, how are we past that? This is the venue.
If I could finish my...
Well, I'm speaking. We heard some comments about one candidate. Would you like to speak maybe to the merits? Are you, are you somebody who really wants to make sure that a candidate who you feel is getting left out of this would like some advocacy? I would personally love to hear it.
I think it's too late for that.
Can I, can I opine, please, for just a moment? Carl, you mentioned exactly how I felt, and you, being an employer, also understands this. If one candidate rises to the very top, that's your candidate. They shine above all else, but that's besides the point. That is a very valid reason to have this discussion we're having now. As you well know, our company operates the FBI at Lake Tahoe Airport. And Mr. Tracel stated that he worked at Lake Tahoe Airport for quite a while. And I went and asked around about Mr. Tracel. Did you want to say something, Bradley?
I just wanted to say that rather than character assassination on TV, I have said that Corey is just fine. Why don't we leave it there, vote on Corey?
There's no character assassination.
Instead of, instead of you now talking about what somebody told you about Philip Tracel.
Bradley, you know, we're trying to get the full picture here, and you keep...
It's pointless. I'm the one guy that was holding, that was holding out for talking to Philip. I'm now saying, don't talk to Philip, so don't talk about Philip. Let's vote on having Corey come.
So you're running the table here. Is that what you're telling us, Bradley? You make the decisions for us all? Can I finish, please? So I asked around people, you know, who live in my neighborhood, have been there for years. Carl, you know what it's like. You live in a small community around the lake. You know everybody. And are close to everybody. So I did ask around. There wasn't anyone who knew Philip or his tenure at Lake Tahoe Airport. However, I do want to opine to, you know, give you some good firsthand information. I did receive a letter from Janice Brand, and I've known Janice for decades, worked with her for probably 15 years as a counterpart when she was working at the airport, working in the city, working in the city finance department. Her husband used to do the snow removal at the airport in Tahoe, and she had written a letter very fondly supporting Philip, and I did want to share that with you. And I don't know if you had seen that, but I trust Janet pretty implicitly. She had a lot of good to say about Mr. Tracel. I just couldn't find anyone else that knew of him or had any dealings with him at all. The other thing is, and I want to point this out, it is pertinent to this discussion. As I recall, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but Corey Jenkins works at an airport with a lot of users. It is a core GA airport in the Las Vegas metro area, older city, as I recall. Lots of really hardcore GA users there. Is that correct?
Yes.
Am I correct? Okay.
Yeah.
And I placed a few calls there, got some very positive feedback on him. Mr. Tracel, on the other hand, and again, this is not character assassination, just stating the facts, Bradley. As I recall, he manages a private airport with a handful of owners, operators. We have about 300-based aircraft at Carson City Airport. That is a huge difference from a private airport with a dozen or so homeowners on it, because it's really an HOA is what it is. And the point being is, I'm looking at apples to apples, and that's one of the things I did in reviewing this. Mr. Jenkins is much more aligned with us based on his background and where he works than anyone else. Again, the gentleman seems to rise to the top based on my limited due diligence of him. So that's what I wanted to add to this. Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to have to say, but without question, Corey has raised to the top of every single issue that we've, that we're dealing with here and how to, and how to deal with it. And I think we'd be incredibly lucky to have him here. The other thing is, too, is that, hey, I'm under a lot of pressure with all our airport patrons to be able to deliver a good airport manager, that they can all get along with, that things are going to work out. And so without question, I think Corey would be, do an excellent job at doing that. And there's a lot in it for all of us. This is one of the most important decisions we are going to make. And so without question, I think Corey's far and above a great candidate, and I think we'd be lucky to get him.
Well, Paul, if, I'm sorry, John? I didn't even see over there. I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Member Hamilton just stated my only real reservation about what we're doing here tonight. You know, you said you have an obligation to the airport to deliver the best possible candidate, and so do I. And so what we're, to me, what we're discussing tonight is whether I'm going to be willing to shortcut my process for making my decision between two very well-qualified candidates and defer to some other members of this board that are highly opinionated about who's the best candidate. So what I would, so that's my, really my only reservation. What you're asking, functionally, what you're asking me to do, Paul, is you're asking me to trust you and shortcut my process for making my decision between the two candidates. And I think that that is, you know, a big ask. But I want to be clear what it is that we're asking. In addition to the fact that we are short cutting the process, we are, we are being asked to compress a seven-member board into three people, or, excuse me, to two people who were involved in the interview process and say, yep, we trust, we trust your judgment. Now, how am I going to vote? I do trust these two people very, 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 very well, but I really don't appreciate the process being shifted so that I don't get to meet the two candidates and decide for myself.
Okay. I appreciate that, John. I think we all do. Yes, Carl?
So in the remarks that were just made by the chair, it called attention to something that I just wanted to highlight, because this is very material to how my decision will be made. And it was calling attention back to the fact that while there was limited experience in Mr. Tracel's resume in airport operations at Lake Tahoe for really one year, and some operations or airport maintenance supervision for about a year back in New Jersey sometime before that. Indeed, the time from November 2012 to the present, so the vast majority of Mr. Tracel's experience is at Bonny Doon Airport. That is a private field, okay? That is a very different user base. That is a very different FAA scenario. And that is something I would just, you know, footstomp and call attention to when we're talking about two candidates who really passed muster with our committee that was selected to evaluate these things, and it's nice to hear that there are strong feelings. You know, maybe there's a little dickering over who's number one and who's number two, okay? Between a list that started with 10, right? But if I'm having to say, do I need to know more? Or when picking between those two, do I have the information I need? Not because somebody spoke vociferously tonight on this dais or whispered anything in my ear or anything like this, but just looking at that matter, I think I can make my decision.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, one last comment. Now, I know, you know, we haven't heard a whole lot from Stan. I don't know if you want to opine any further on this matter, sir?
I was just going to, just to reiterate, what I would ask the board to consider is to give our committee an opportunity to make a offer to Mr. Jenkins and arrange for a special meeting where the board meets Mr. Jenkins and a chance to get to know Mr. Jenkins before we make our final vote.
And that's, that's...
That way, everybody has a reasonable amount of buy-in at that time. And if there's a concern, that's when it can be made. Now, I do agree that that does leave out the other candidate, which I do understand. And if for some reason that Mr. Jenkins chose not to take our offer, I would still be very happy to look into an offer for the second candidate, even though he doesn't have some of the skills that I would enjoy seeing. I do think he's a very good person and could learn those skills. I do believe that. But at this point, that's what I'd ask the board to consider, to go ahead and let us have a committee offer him, see if he'll accept, come up here, meet us, have a special meeting and do the formal.
Yeah, I think that, well, as I stated at the beginning of this discussion, and Counselor Takeus ratified that, what we're talking about here is, or what was being bantered around before this meeting and during this meeting on this agenda item is to offer the position to an applicant subject to negotiating the compensation package in terms of employment. It's the compensation package in terms of employment, along with the candidate, that has to be approved ultimately by the board. So this is a step in the process. It's not the final end-all, be-all in that process. Yes, Stan?
So we're going to offer the guy the job with salary and benefits, right?
I, well, I think, here's, here's what was asked on this, was to offer the gentleman the position subject to a negotiation on salary, benefits, and terms. Okay? And then we would, then we would, then we would come back, once that is hammered out.
Comes that, then he comes for the meet and greet.
He comes back to the...
And he gets the formal approved.
That's correct.
I, I keep in mind, first of all, that there was not going to be a contract this time, because we've said this is an at-will employee, right? Right? And there's been a lot of talk about negotiations and all that sort of thing. But considering that this is an at-will employee, what we need to do, gentlemen, is, there's, I mean, we know what the benefits are going to be, right? They're going to, they're going to be what the benefits are, because by law, they have to be. We, and we have a salary range. And considering this is a a guy without a contract, I think what we need to do is agree on what we're going to be offering.
Well, that, that comes into play after this evening. And we actually have, Bradley, a employment terms letter that we've already worked out.
I'm not, that's fine. I think that's terrific. But my point is, there's a...
For another, for another employee.
For that letter to be finished, it needs to have a salary in it.
Needs to have a salary, and it's going to have different benefits.
And the benefits are going to be what the state benefits are.
Well, I will only say it's going to, it's going to be, the economic terms will be different, okay? The prior agreement that you had voted to approve had some certain unique attributes that this one won't. That's all.
I'm not arguing that. There's going to be an employment letter. What I'm saying is that employment letter, for it to be an offer, needs to have a salary in it. And this board needs to, needs to say what that salary is.
And this board will say that at a later date, after the employee, after the prospective employee has been made an offer and a discussion takes place with that employee to agree upon a dollar amount.
But we're not going to vote on what that offer should be.
You are going to vote on that. Not right now. Go ahead.
Let me just speak to that. I think in the job announcement, you put a salary range.
There is a salary range.
And so now, I think, if I'm understanding this correctly, we offer the job, we negotiate what salary in that range that the candidate will accept, and that comes back to you for approval. And so I don't think that you have to pick that salary tonight. In fact, I don't think there's a way to do that, because you need to know what specific issues that this particular candidate may have that we didn't have the last time around. Last time around, remember, we had someone who had health insurance through his former federal employment. And so we worked through that and provided a monetary incentive in lieu of that. And here, I think that we're going to have to do the same thing. We, being the collective, we...
Yeah, there were also different vacation benefits there. There were also different holidays there that were very generous, that may not be so generous this time around. There was also stipulation in there about use of personal vehicle that's going to change, because now we have an airport vehicle. So there will be some revisions to that.
Okay, well, that's fine, then. If we, I mean, if we collectively don't even know what we're going to offer the guy, then, then, then I guess there's just going to be a couple of people that decide what he gets paid to, much less who comes to work.
Well, what is the normal process here? I mean, this is yet another one of those places that I shake my head and liken performance reviews for employees of a public body, where I'm just like, how is this supposed to work in the constraints of the law and yet in the, like, rationale of business, okay? So maybe, maybe counsel could, could just sort of clarify on this. Yes, there was a bandwidth of salary that was advertised with the position. I am completely with Member Harris around the seemingly obvious thing that when you make someone a job offer, you're offering them a position with a salary and a certain number of days of vacation and maybe some benefits and what have you. And it's their, you know, opportunity to either say, it sounds great to me, or counteroffer on that. So I think the real question here is, just simply within the rules of the road of how public law and the airport authority is supposed to work, who has the ability to negotiate and within what bandwidth? And then, when something is agreed, bring it back to here for a ratification? I think that's the real question. So does the chairman have the ability to have that negotiation within some certain set of parameters?
Before you answer that question, Steve, I want to remind this airport authority of something, because this infuriated me, and we are not going down this road again. Last year, we got in to a wage discussion amongst the airport authority for a prospective employee in a public meeting. There is no reason to go down that road. It was a horribly embarrassing, messy situation last year. I don't ever want to see us go there again. We don't have to go there, and we shouldn't be going there. What, let's see, you know, Bradley is right. Let's see what the board says on the candidate, if you want to shortcut the process, if you want to... If you want to shortcut the process, if you want to extend an offer of employment, and then discuss the economic terms with the prospective employee. We're not gonna negotiate terms of employment in a public forum amongst ourselves as a board. That was a big mistake.
Well, at some point, we have to have that discussion.
Right. And you will have that discussion when you approve it. But, you know, welcome to, you know, public body decisions. It's not like private business. Every one of us is in pri, has been in private business. And we make executive decisions and we take into account all the information that we have. In a public body, that, a lot of that process is laid bare to the public on the theory that the public has a right to know what the thinking process is and what's going on. But keep in mind, when you hire someone, Carl, and I know this is true in, in your business as well as others, you look to see also, one of the factors you look at is what were they getting paid before? Because if you pay them something less than what they're getting paid before, you take the risk that they're not gonna want the job. Or you better have some really good reasons why this is a better job if you're gonna do that. And I think that that's part of the interplay that occurs when you get to the salary negotiations. And so to answer your question, please wait a minute. To answer your question, yes, the chairman could go and enter into those negotiations, but this body as a whole has to approve the results of that. And so there's a little bit of a risk to the chairman of negotiating something that this body says, well, no, we don't want to do that. We've been down that road before, although not with the chairman, but with a former airport manager who was given instructions as to what his limitations were to hire someone and came back to you with a contract for somebody else for more money. And that's a very awkward situation. I'm sure it was very awkward for him. It was very awkward for the person he wanted to hire. And so there's a little bit of risk involved in it, but that's the process that I think's appropriate here. You allow them to negotiate those terms, bring them back here with the risk that if they did it wrong, they may mess up the whole thing.
Just one point to, point of clarification. In terms of, of the person's salary, because the legislature, the Nevada legislature passed a law and the governor signed it, in this, um, in this state, you can no longer ask for salary information. So there, we don't get to, so if any of you have that conversation, we can't ask Cory or anybody else what the salary is.
I wouldn't ask.
Okay, you can't ask for past salary.
You're saying, though, that that's not even published somewhere?
It may, I don't know if it's published or not, but we're not allowed to ask for it.
He's an employee of the Bubla, Boulder City Airport. It's on that website that has every government employee's salary. So that's, that's not confidential information. That could be discovered.
Let me, go ahead, Stan. Can you turn your microphone on, sir? Thank you.
There's more to the package than just pay. I mean, it's days off, leave, holidays, on and on. And that's gotta be part of the package before you negotiate. You can't go down and say, I'm gonna give you a hundred thousand, and then next week say, oh, by the way, you don't get a weekend's off. It's gotta be a package. And somebody's gotta design that before we start talking.
We, we actually have that. We have that framework, Stan.
Well, but I just heard you say, we're not gonna do that on this contract.
No, no, no. I was talking about the, the salary and economic terms because we had a very ugly discussion last year during the summer that was more than awkward. It was an unmitigated disaster where the airport authority was thrown into something by a member of the airport staff. And we got into a negotiation in a public meeting on a, what I'll call a Zoom call, about someone's pay. Let me be clear. Again, we have the framework of a terms of employment agreement, not a contract, terms of employment agreement. We had that framework approved, geez, what, three months? Yeah, not even three months ago. Now, there will be some refinements to that, and that will come back to the airport authority for approval. Before it's approved. Oh, yeah. Myself nor any other member of this airport authority has any authority to offer something to any prospective candidate that's set in stone. They, they're going to understand that it has to be approved by the airport authority.
I think maybe this is just the aha here. Okay, to be clear, you will make, as the chairman, an offer that has all of those details. And someone, and the candidate may counteroffer that. You may get to a negotiated point that you're satisfied with, with. At which point you say, dear candidate, I believe that we agree on these terms pending the board's approval of this offer.
There you go. Exactly. And I'm not doing this on my own. I want to make that clear. I, I had asked Tim to participate in this with me so that I'm not doing it on my own. I don't want that sole responsibility. I want another witness to this discussion. If, if we decide to go down that road. Yes, John?
So the agenda item is that proposed motion is that we're going to offer the job to one of the candidates and that Michael and Tim are gonna negotiate the compensation package and then bring that before the board for final approval. That's one choice. That's, to me, what we're being asked here, just so I'm clear, what we're being asked to decide is between this choice, the choice that I just described, or the other choice would be to bring our two best candidates in, put them in front of this board, allow the board to interview them, and then let the board choose who we're gonna make the offer to and then authorize some subset of the board to negotiate terms. Is that, am I, am I getting that right?
You're pretty close.
Correct.
You're pretty close, yeah.
I personally am ready to decide that.
Okay. Would anyone like to do anything with this, move this along? I think we've discussed this pretty thoroughly. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we authorize the city manager, the airport acting manager and the chairman of the board to continue the process of hiring Mr., whatever his name is.
It's right here in your board memo, Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, Mr. Jenkins.
Okay. We have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. So the motion is to offer the prospective candidate Cory Jenkins employment and authorize board chair and acting interim manager to negotiate compensation package and terms of employment with Mr. Jenkins. And the results of that would come back to the airport authority for approval. So, all in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Are you opposing?
No.
Oh, did you vote for it?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, the vote is six, one. And the, again, what we're going to do is offer the position of employment to Mr. Cory Jenkins. And myself and Tim Pulitz will negotiate the compensation package with him along with terms of employment. We'll bring it back to the airport authority. And one of the things that we are gonna do is require that he be here to meet all of us. That is gonna be a requirement of this process, without question. You're gonna have to come before the board. Okay? Any other questions?
Would you presume that that meeting be, when you say come before the board, be at the meeting in which we approve or do not approve, but take the action on that offer?
Yes. And I would also suggest that we stick with having a social arrangement at the airport and inviting our airport users and owners to come on out and visit with this candidate.
That's exactly where I was heading next, is would there maybe be on the evening before?
Either the evening before or the lunch before, afternoon before. And I know there have been offers to volunteer for both transportation, providing lunch and cooking. Tim, raise your hand, providing lunch and cooking. Hold on, providing barbecue and cook, John, providing lunch and cooking. We're, we're barbecuing for this. So we either do it the night before or the afternoon of, and then we will convene in a special meeting. Let Tim reach out to Mr. Jenkins. And we'll start that conversation, see if we can get a special meeting convened, perhaps before the end of the month, maybe? Maybe? Okay. Is everybody around through the end of the month? Carl?
Away next week.
You're away next week, okay. But you're here the following week?
Yes.
Bradley, are you here through the end of the month? Do you have any travel plans?
I am here.
Paul and Stan, are you both here through the end of the month? You're gone next week. Okay, this is good information. Tim, I know where you and I are. Okay. John?
Choppy, but around.
Around, okay. I only have one day that may cause me a problem in the next couple of weeks, so. Okay, that works. I know it's been a two-hour-plus adventure here. Can we get through one more item? Or does anyone need a break? Good, one more item? Okay, we have one more item on our regular agenda. We've skipped around plenty this evening and I appreciate everybody's patience and professionalism this evening. The last item is item number six. Discussion possible action, election of fiscal year 2021 through 2023, Carson City Airport Authority officers, president, vice president, secretary and treasurer. I think that's chair, vice chair, secretary and treasurer. And Steve Council, will you brief us on this? Steve Takeus?
Steve Council.
Will you brief us on this?
I'm Steve Council.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the statute that created the airport authority allows you to elect a chair, a vice chair and secretary treasurer. You can call it president, vice president, it doesn't really matter. You can elect that at any time. However, on the odd years, those terms expire on July 1st. And so on odd years in June, we always have an item to reelect officers. And that doesn't mean it can't change months from now or years from now. I'm, years from now. But it can change really at any time. But it's important that you do the election right now. And so there's three spots. Secretary and treasurer could actually be two different positions. Historically, they never have been. So we typically look at it as a chair, a vice chair and a secretary treasurer. And the process is you nominate people for the position. And if you want to, you can nominate a, a platform of people, you know, a person for chairman, a person for vice chairman, a person for secretary treasurer, and then just vote on that nomination, or you can take these individually. And so the process is to open it for nominations, hear what nominations are made, close the nominations, and then you vote on it. And there, there really isn't, even though like every item, there could be public comment. I've never found that there's ever been public comment that anybody ever wanted to make on this. So if you call for public comment, you're welcome to. John Mase will probably prove me incorrect. But that's, that's the process. And so with that, the chair should open nominations and move it right along.
Happily. We'd, we'd like to open nominations to this matter and move things right along. Would anyone like to nominate? Yes, Paul.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to nominate John Rogers for secretary treasurer, Tim Pulitz for vice president, and Micah Golden for president.
Well, thank you, Paul. I must say, I'm honored. I appreciate it. And I know it's been a pleasure. I'm willing to extend my tenure for another couple of years to do what I'm doing here. And I'd be honored to work with Tim and John, and they've both done a fantastic job. Are there any other nominations? Anyone? Any members of the public wish to opine? Okay. Considering that, why don't we go to a vote then? We have a motion. Anyone like to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bradley. Bradley's gonna second it. So the motion is for John to stay on and really carry the weight. And, and I gotta really say, I'm saying this seriously. The treasurer does more work on a regular basis than the vice chair or the chair. And we, we thank you immensely for what you do. I'm saying that with all sincerity. Thank you. But for John to remain his treasurer, for Tim to be vice chair, and for myself to remain his chair for the next 24-month term. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Okay? Aye? Motion carries? Thank you all very much. I'm honored, really am. Really honored. Last time it was a little different. I was asked to do it when Linda stepped down and decided to spend more time with her husband. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to, to take the tally real quick, how many years are left in each of these officer's terms? Will, will all three of you be able to serve out two years?
Yes.
Some of the terms
We'll, we'll be able to, but we're not obligated to.
Yeah.
I mean, all, all three of our terms, I think, come up, oh, no. Myself and Michael's terms come up at the end of, at this fall.
Yeah, I think John, myself and Bradley come up in the fall.
You and I are September, and I think
Is John earlier?
I think that's right. He may be November, but he's right around in there.
To put it a different way, nobody's term limited before the end of
No.
Correct. That's correct. And, and keep in mind, you know, you can have elections at any time in the future. So if someone decided they didn't want to re-up or something like that, and they were one of the officers, great, we have an election, we put somebody else in the barrel.
Okay. So let's move this along again. Thank you all for the honor. Appreciate it. And especially thank you, John Rogers. And Bradley, thank you for serving as vice chair. And Tim, thank you for stepping in as vice chair. We've gone through the airport engineer's report, airport manager's report.
Okay. I didn't know what's up next.
You are, sir.
Pretty quick. Oh, here we are. Okay, so you can see the attached board packet for aircraft activity. It's been holding pretty strong. We had over 2,154 departures out of our airport last month. As you can see from the spreadsheets, that the single-prop aircraft is about 80% of all of our activity, which is, which is understood. We have a very small amount of helicopter, about a consistent amount of jets and a consistent amount of multi-prop. The runway slurry and repainting project was complete and was described by Armstrong Engineering. It was unfortunate that they took a day, about 28 hours longer than they were supposed to. What we did, I consulted with, with Paul and Michael and we, we negotiated with the contractors to open it Saturday morning for an hour to let all those people that were planning on getting out could get out. And so they stood, stood back and let those eight or 10 aircraft get out or get in when they needed to, which was really a good, a good step. It worked out very well for some people that really were terribly inconvenienced. So I do give them credit for that. We did order a rooftop camera for the terminal building that's gonna focus directly on our tarmac and about 50 to 60% of the runway that's gonna be integrated into our gate system, which is not for public. This is different than Michael's Web 360 that he is hosting over his self-serve fuel, which we are greatly appreciative. Thank you, Michael. This is strictly for us just to have a little bit more security tracking for access egress and some incursions that could occur on the runway. So it won't be for the public. It'll be for us to have our own reviews. I think it'll be very, very helpful. It was actually budgeted for last year and we just never to get it installed. So it's been ordered, should've been here by now, but it's not, like everything else in this world. I did take the liberty of canceling this year's open house just because it takes three to four months planning. It was both been done this month. And we just couldn't get the volunteers and the wherewithal to put it, put it together this year. We'll task our next manager to do a hell of an open house next year. And maybe we'll make it the best ever if we can put some, get some good volunteer effort out of it. But I'm a little disappointed because the city But I'm a little disappointed because the city and the, the people around here love coming to the open house, and a lot of the vendors enjoy coming.
They love it.
They do love it, so, uh, we'll make up for it next year. Hopefully, we'll, uh, get a real, a real strong, uh, participation level. And with that, I am done with my report.
Thank you, Tim. Again, this airport and this airport authority, we are indebted to Tim Pulitz for the amount of volunteer work, uh, he has pursued here. And on our behalf, thank you, Tim, can't begin to thank you enough. Steve Takez, anything you want to report to us?
Uh, I gave you a briefing in your board packet, um, there have been a couple of law changes at the last legislative session, and so I just highlighted them for you. Uh, just as an overview, they made some changes to the open meeting law to allow us to have virtual meetings even after pandemic. Uh, requires us to take certain steps, like make sure that the link is available to everyone, uh, and there's a way for them to see, be heard, and, uh, participate. Um, it's available to us in part because we are not aboard all of elected officials. The Board of Supervisors has a different situation because they're all elected. Uh, a non-elected board can do it, uh, and a mixed board can do it. A fully-elected board can't take, take advantage of that. Um, they still need to have a physical presence. Uh, but, you know, your, your DA, I'm sure is very up on this, we'll brief you on that. And they also created an exception to the open meeting law on certain environmental issue meetings. And the idea is to give some confidentiality to environmental issues that, um, have repercussions, you know, like if there were a fuel spill and we were trying to deal with, uh, the environmental compliance issues, uh, making that public may make it more difficult to comply. And so, there's some exemptions there. Frankly, in all the years I've been involved in the airport authority, um, I don't recall any environmental actions that were brought against the airport where that would apply, but, um, it's out there. Um, there was, uh, another, uh, provision on underground fuel tanks, um, and it extends liability to former owners of the fuel tanks, not just the current owners. And, um, so that would be of concern to us because we did have underground fuel tanks, but they were a long time ago. Uh, the city technically was the owner, the city came out and remediated, and we had the people from the Department of Environmental Protection, or not, not, yeah, we had DEP, and we had the city's environmental officers out when we removed those tanks to ensure that the perimeter of the tank was not contaminated. And so, um, I don't think we have any risk for underground fuel tanks because that's the only tank that we're aware of. Uh, there was a budget bill, this is kind of interesting, where they gave, uh, 3.6 million to the Office of the Military to construct an aircraft storage, uh, hangar in southern Nevada. Um, I was unaware, um, even though I was, had my ear to the, um, to the tracks, uh, I was unaware that they had proposed to give any money for aviation out of the governor's budget. But, um, I guess the lesson learned is, um, we should ask for money every year in our every legislative session, because if they're giving it out, we want to be in that line. And if they're not giving it out, there's no harm done. There's a provision that requires us, if we have vending machines in our terminal area, we have to make those available to organizations that service the blind first, they get a preference. Um, we don't have that situation, it's really geared more toward the larger airports. And it's just a way of the legislature saying, hey, we want to do something nice for those particular charities. We still have, um, a tax abatement for manufacturers of aircraft parts who move their business to Nevada. That incentive's been around for, I think, uh, three sessions, I think it was done two sessions ago, actually. Um, and it was a way to attract other businesses, aircraft repair businesses here to, uh, Nevada. You have to move a sizable business, and you have to make a lot of investment before you get the tax abatement. But they've refined that a little bit to, uh, also include intellectual property. So, if you're bringing expensive intellectual property, you know, like the patents on how to do, uh, some kind of aircraft that nobody else can do, we want to encourage people to do that and bring that to our state. You have to bring in $5 billion in new investment, and that's, um, we haven't seen a lot of that. Uh, there was actually a little bit of it in Las Vegas. One of the satellite, uh, companies moved in there, I can't remember which one it was, but, um, but that's happened. And then, um, diesel exhaust fluid, the stuff, if you have a diesel ve- vehicle, you have to put this diesel exhaust fluid in, it's actually, um, it's actually, I guess it's kind of a urine-type, um, material. But when mixed with the exhaust gas, it, uh, makes the exhaust gas less toxic to the environment. And so, they've got, uh, a provision in here about aircraft and DEF. I'm not familiar with any diesel-burning aircraft, uh, there are some in the military, um, at least I've been told that, but they exempted the military from this requirement. So, I'm not really sure what they're going after, but I'm just alerting you in the event somebody proposed bringing vehicles that burn, uh, diesel fuel here, uh, we should just be aware that there's some special requirements that we need to make sure are covered. That's it, um, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. John, Treasurer's report.
Uh, not a lot to report, getting late as well, so, but I, I, just a curiosity item. If you look at your, at the P and L, um, you'll notice that there's a, uh, under, under 5,500, I think, is the, uh, the code. It's a revenue item, um, and it's miscellaneous, miscellaneous revenue, miscellaneous income. And, uh, what that is, oh, 5,400, sorry, excuse me, on that. $36,000 in revenue we got this year from insurance, uh, re, uh, payments to us from people who crashed into our brand-new shiny fence, so. Apparently, they, people can't resist that shiny object, they keep crashing into it, we've had. And then, and then we, and then their insurance companies pays for that, for us to fix the fence, and that's what that miscellaneous item is, so just a curiosity item. I also would like to report, on a more serious note, I'll report that we did hire, um, our auditor for, um, this fiscal year, which will be ending in a few days. Uh, it's the same auditor we've used in the past, Aid Bailey. And so, they're very familiar with us, and we're very familiar with them, so, um, I think that was a good choice.
Thank you, John, thank you again for the work you do as Treasurer, really appreciate it. Airport Authority members, anyone want to report anything?
I'll just reiterate that, uh, and I will work with, uh, you to calendar this for the next meeting once we get some detail, but I'd expect, uh, to see a bit of a presentation from Carson Tower Executive next, next month.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that.
I've got an item.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My term runs out September, and it was my intention to let that run out, not to get back on the board. Uh, but, uh, after my experience tonight, I've decided that I'll send a resignation letter, letter to Michael next week, uh, and get off the board. Um, and let me just explain, uh, my reasoning here. You know, I, as an HR guy, I've put up with a lot of pain on this or, with this organization, particularly when it came to Ken Moe and, and some of the decisions made there. Uh, I mean, I won't go through all of them, but, you know, there was, I think, a violation of the open meeting law, we're, we're still going to find out if that's the case. Uh, I think that, um, firing Ken without board action was way out of the, the authority of the chairman. Uh, nobody voted to, to terminate Ken, we voted to take his contract away. And number three, uh, that I still don't, I don't understand is we're yet to reach a settlement with Ken. Uh, there's no, not even a conversation going on at this point, and, and I, I just, I, I don't understand it.
But, Mr. Counselor, before this goes any further, I would love to have your advice as a member of this board who has liabilities, whether this is a conversation that's appropriate right now.
We should not be getting in the details of pending legal action. Legal action was threatened against us.
Uh, that, that, that didn't have any, that didn't have any, any details. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry if I-
I'm sorry, that had, I think that was across the line.
Okay, I, I crossed, okay, I, I apologize, so, but I'm done talking about that piece. But today-